Okay, so it comes to here.
Seven, seven. We're unmuted. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. It's July 7th, 8:59. We call this special meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Jake, who will call?
Keesha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Very good, we have two items to cover today. We have department updates and a GIS review presentation. Is there a motion to approve this morning's agenda?
Make motion, we approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Okay, very good. All right, on to department updates then. I guess we'll go around the horn, see if there's anything we need to discuss, cover. We'll start with the ever informative Michaela Bigowut. And how are things going in the Treasurers' office? Michaela?
Extremely busy. We got through month end, we're kind of fighting our way through year end.
Speak up, Michaela.
Hang on, we're gonna...
Sorry.
There you go.
Better?
Little bit.
Yeah.
It might be on our end, too.
We turned it up here, Michaela, so you should be good now.
Okay. The Treasurers' office is extremely busy. We got through month end, we're still, you know, fighting our way through the process of year end, which takes much of July to get that ready and certify taxes. I checked the outstanding tax amount this morning. We are down to, I think, $270,000. Ninety-nine point four eight percent is what has been collected. I'm not unhappy with that number. Obviously, I would like to see that continue to go lower. Still waiting from the governor to hear whether we will or will not hold a tax sale this year, or whether that will be up to each individual county to determine. Lot of titles still coming in. People still buying vehicles, just definitely struggling to keep up. The appointment system is going well. Again, that helps a lot. So, still just working to get the word out that that's how we're doing things and helping folks get used to scheduling online using the website. Oh, and we are opening Pella driver's license tomorrow.
Okay.
So, we are able to schedule Pella online as well. They have their own dropdown. That seems to be going well. People are using it. We're already booked out a few weeks in Pella, which is good.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Michaela. Appreciate the update, all the hard work you guys are doing. We'll stay in that room right now. Whoop, go ahead, somebody have something? Okay, nothing? Counselor?
From an update standpoint, just so the board knows, the Jump Start the Jury Trial Task Force proposed their recommendations to get jury trials starting again. That's important to us because we have charged, you may follow the media, we did charge someone with murder in the first degree, and that person has chosen not to waive their right to speedy trial. So, as of right now, we will be trying a murder case in September, end of September, early October, which will make us one of the first, assuming that she doesn't change her mind and waive down the rule, which is certainly possible. We will be one of the first major cases, unfortunately, that will go after restrictions are lifted, for lack of a better term. So, if you recall, in early April, I started to work with some of our community partners to find where we could possibly have a trial.
Right.
And at this point, I will be submitting probably the Pleasantville Memorial Hall just because of spacing. You think about, they're recommending we bring in 50% more jurors than are normally needed because people just aren't showing up across the country for other jury trials. So, the likelihood or the ability to bring 150 people into one place and socially distance is a difficult endeavor. And so, I think whether or not it's an auditorium or a gymnasium at one of our high schools, the other proposal that they're making, or memorial halls, is that jury trials will run from 8:30 in the morning till 2:30 without a break and then be done for the day, so as to not deal with the issues of how long it takes people to get screened back in. Everyone will be needing to wear face shields during this process, so there's lots of things for us to work through, and it appears just by timing, we may be one of the first jurisdictions if the defendant doesn't waive her speedy trial right. The second issue that I'll tell you is I always give you guys updates concerning collections. And even though, at least from my perspective, we lost March, April, May, and June as collection where we normally make and collect the most amount of money, we are normally the most successful around tax time. People tend to use their tax refunds. We did not see the same type of thing with stimulus money. But nonetheless, in total, we collected $632,000 last year. That resulted in a check to the county in excess of $106,000. And as it relates to sheriff's room and board and sheriff fees, we collected about $54,000 for the sheriff and additional $40,000 in restitution. So, losing almost a fourth of the year, I'm pretty impressed with what Chrissy has been able to collect and what we've been able to do in that timeframe. So, that's my update.
Ed, just a quick question on the potential jury trial. Are any costs that we need to plan for associated with that?
At this moment in time, I don't anticipate significant expert witness fees. We may have slightly higher than normal service fees, those types of things. But at this moment in time, I don't envision us having an expert witness that is an outside expert. This case is, there'll be a lot of blood and DNA evidence, but those witnesses are, for lack of a better term, free from the state. So, other than, you know, I think this will be a trial that I should be able to get done within my scheduled budget that's already been submitted for this year. We have jury fees. We anticipate a major trial a year, and so this will just be...
Okay.
Hopefully, we don't get another one.
Okay.
Ed? Hey, Ed, this is Steve. I have a question, just so I'm clear on this whole vision of jury trials. I'm hearing that we're probably not ever, we're not going to have a jury trial in our facilities at East Elementary. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, I never say never, but I cannot come up with a scenario that we... Our court, well, let me just put it this way. The fire chief, Jeff Anderson, came out. One of the things that we needed to do was give a number of occupancy and then reduce that number in half to provide to the court system, how many people could we have in court at one time? Both the courtrooms that we have, the maximum occupancy is nine people. So, we could never have a jury trial there. And quite honestly, at this moment in time, that small number of occupancy, we can't do, if we have a juvenile court hearing where we have multiple fathers, I can't even have all the participants in a termination of parental rights in one room. So, we have worked with Andrew about, one of the things that we did not anticipate when we started this process was the fact that we have to have public access live streaming of our courtrooms because the public is supposed to be able to have access to the courthouse and be able to watch proceedings. And that makes sense. I know I have folks with the media who are listening. They like to be able to report on what's going on in the courthouse. And so, one of the things, once we get back up and running after July 13th, is we're going to have to have a spot where people can watch the trial or watch court going on. We're going to use our staging room because we have a TV in there. We will use owl technology like we have right now. And folks will be able to watch what's going on in that room. The problem is, on a day like today, we have... We would need to be using both courtrooms because all four of the attorneys need to be down in court, whereas usually, we were all in one courtroom. We now have to be in both courtrooms. We don't have the technology, if I'm being honest at this moment in time, to be able to livestream two courtrooms. A, we don't have the technology, and B, I don't have the space. And I'm not sure what the point is in putting another TV in the staging room if neither of them can turn on the sound because you're not going to be able to have both courtrooms going at once. So, Steve, I don't, to answer your question, no. There is no chance, in my opinion, that we could have a jury trial at East Elementary.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. I think Chris and I are going to be out to chit chat with everybody out there after this meeting, so maybe we can work something out on some stuff. Thank you. That helps a lot.
Thank you. Let's see. Recorder. Is Karen in there? Ed?
Yes.
How are things going?
Karen's here. Things are going well. We're very busy. We're still just unbelievable. People are buying and selling boats, ATVs. I think it's because they can't go anywhere else, so they're just staying more at home and spending their money doing those things. Recording is still up. It seems a lot of people are refinancing, which is mortgages and then releases of their previous mortgage. So, yeah, we're staying busy and doing the best we can. Still not doing passports. We haven't, we just don't have time to get that room ready at this time. So, we're not doing passports yet, maybe in August or September.
Okay. Okay. Very good, thanks, Karen. So, very good. Did I see the sheriff in that room as well?
I'm here.
Anything sheriff from your sheriff's office?
No, nothing reported, same as always, just busy with the heat.
Okay. Very good.
Assistant or...
Yeah, I don't know. Is Kelly there?
No, she's on the phone with a few tax parents. Something major going on. You know, we started doing fieldwork next week, going out and doing rechecks and everything. Bring a big stack of them, so we'll start on that. And then, we'll start all the new stuff probably in September. Start going out and making all the new stuff then.
Okay, very good, thank you.
That's basically what's going on.
All right, thank you. All right.
Planning and zoning.
What's that?
Planning and zoning.
Missy's back there.
Is Missy there as well?
Yeah, I'm here, Mark.
Anything going on?
Yeah, it's staying extremely busy. We're close to 100 building permits for the year already, I guess. So, that's my question. I have two meetings on July 21st. Are we still doing the virtual, are we doing the mix, or what are we doing?
Say that again?
Virtual. Well, I have two meetings I have to have on the 21st of July. I have a vote, a voting commission, and vote adjustments, so what's our plan for meetings?
Still do virtual.
Okay.
Still do virtual, Missy.
Okay. So, yeah, using the appointment. So, appointments and everything is extremely busy, so...
Okay, good. Tyler?
Business as usual for the most part around here. Kind of like Missy, we have unusually high number of driveway permits or within the right-of-way permits right now. So, dealing with that, property splits are not necessarily a permit, but need our review prior to split four A drive. So, that's pretty time consuming right now. Luckily, all of our construction happened in the spring, so we're kind of in a lull right now as far as construction, but that'll be ramping up here again in August with pavement markings, seal coat, micro-surfacing, bridge project, and a couple of large diameter tankers that are culvert replacements that a contractor will be doing. I did pull up revenues. So, we ended the fiscal year 3.2% higher on road use tax than was budgeted for FY '20, which is an additional $144,000. At the end of June, we also received our final prediction for FY '21 road use tax. So, for the upcoming year, it went down, but it only went down $27,000. I'm not quite sure how to take that because two days prior, receiving that, we got a letter from the DOT saying we're going to see 25% reduction for three to five months, which would be much more than $27,000. So, again, we're just kind of in a wait-and-see pattern until September.
Very good, thanks, Tyler. Appreciate it. Steve? Parks?
We're just incredibly busy like everybody else is. I've got some figures for the end of fiscal year. I estimated our camping for FY '19 and '20 to be around $271,000. Our actual collections were $345,000, so that's a gross increase of $74,000. And then, if we subtract the refunds that we made to people due to cancellation with COVID-19, that was about $24,000, so we still had a net increase of $50,000, which will go back to the general basic. If we add all of our revenue together, the cabins and everything, we took in about half a million miles, about $500,000, which is a record for us. So, that's pretty impressive when you take it on the things we had to deal with on the park side with the COVID-19 virus. Usually, after the Fourth of July holiday, you'll see a lull in camping. We've got about 160 sites that you can reserve. All of those are not taken. The only thing we have left are walk-up sites for this weekend, so that's unusual as well. I just checked our website to see revenue for the month of July, which would be from July 1st to the 6th, only six days. We've taken in $23,000 already in six days. So, we're not sure what to expect the rest of the year, but we're not seeing any lull or slowdown in revenue sharing use at any time, which is good and bad. The guys who are hiding in there, they're just incredibly tired. Everybody, you know. So, yeah, the national, the cancellation of the nationals, what we ended up doing for all the people who had reservations is we just rolled those over to next year to accommodate them, make it easier. When we found the people actually, once we rolled people over, they came right back online and grabbed for the nationals this week to get tickets for the Outlaws. So, we never favored the fact that it'd be something they would do. So, that's good for us and I guess good for them. So, people keep rolling in and we keep taking their money, so it makes us all happy, I guess.
Well, thanks to your team, Steve. You guys are, yeah. I mean, just those numbers alone showing that kind of an increase. I think with Michaela and what Karen are seeing as well. Missy, activity is, has not slowed down. As a matter of fact, it's probably picked up in many instances from a revenue standpoint, which shows economic activity. It's what we want. That's a good thing. Good thing for us, it's a good thing for these folks as well, so that's good.
Mark, to Steve's point, I just pulled up the traffic counts, statewide traffic counts for the week of, well, July 1 through July 4th. 44% higher than this time last year.
Wow. Wow.
But on a normal week, the week leading up to and this week so far is still about 5% to 10% below normal. But for the Fourth of July holiday, it was 44% higher.
Okay. So, we got a lot of people driving. It's the year of the road trip instead of the plane trip now with the changes. I think that's a good segue. Carla, so we're seeing all this activity, both in the courthouse with Steve, Tyler's road numbers, but how's that equating to our actual employment base? What are we seeing right now in terms of unemployment numbers, etc.?
Yeah, the last numbers I have are for June 27th. We're always a kind of a few weeks behind. We did see an increase in that month for the, or that week for the initial filings. We had 210, so that has gone up some. But like I said before, what we're dealing with is that 165 of those are in manufacturing. And we have several of our manufacturers that are doing these furloughs where, you know, one week a plan is off, one week they're on. And so, that's kind of been a tricky thing that, to really understand unemployment, real numbers as far as people who are really permanently unemployed versus people who are furloding. And so, that gets a little tricky. Our continued unemployment continues to go steady down. I mean, it's kind of 1,268, so it stayed, it was 1,265, I think, the week before. So, very consistent there so far. We're kind of seeing that level out, even though our each-week numbers kind of tend to increase. And that's just kind of a weird function of those furloughs and what being such a heavily manufactured town. You know, I guess a lot of our work still continues, although we're seeing, you know, the messaging with tourism and Iowa's positioned while we're a drive state. So, that's good from an economic standpoint right now to be a drive state versus a fly-in state.
Yep.
We're seeing the messaging turn around to, you know, a lot of our parks and recreation is the focus of the message that the state is doing and that the regionals are doing just because that's what is available for folks to do. Still of concern is helping those customer-facing businesses, especially our restaurant industry. You know, some have seen good pickup. I mean, if they have the drive-through and they have the delivery, they're doing still well. Some of the others are still struggling. And so, we're seeing people not maybe come back to dine-in eating as quickly as you would think. So, there's still some challenges there. I mean, I think there's still some hurting with some of our dine-in restaurants that have dine-in only. But we will continue to work with them and help them with ideas and resources and try to see them through this as things progress. But it's just, that industry, I'd say, is right now the most hurting of any of our industries. Like I said, the parks, recreation, that is going well. And, you know, even I don't know about retail. We haven't looked into that quite as heavily. But I would say, you know, without the traveler visitation for some of our big events, it's definitely hurting in Marion County to lose both Tulip Time and Nationals. But Nationals luckily is going to still have some visitation over those time periods. But certainly, those monies, I think what people, what I was trying to talk with the other day, people don't understand, there's the direct impact to those events. So, that's me buying a ticket, that's direct impact. Or me coming here and staying in a lodging facility or staying in a park, that's a direct impact. What we don't know is the indirect impact of what me coming here and paying money to the Knoxville Raceway, and then the Knoxville Raceway doing a construction project that then employs other people because they have additional revenue. Those are the kind of indirect benefits. Or the nonprofit group who raises money through their food stand that then goes and does other things with that, either for social services or other parts of our community. So, those indirect impacts, I think, are the part that I'm most concerned with from a community standpoint, maybe not an economic standpoint. But that is that churning of money that we probably will see a year delay in some of those things, that those groups and organizations would typically do on a normal year, maybe put off a year on those indirect expenses because they've lost revenue.
Any way to track that?
It's very difficult.
I mean, the velocity of money, M2, right? That's what you're talking about.
But, you know, I mean, hopefully, those events will come back next year and it's a one-year win. But it's just something to understand because, I mean, I've heard from some nonprofits that really, you know, they really rely on those monies to do some extra things, and that money's probably not going to be there this year.
No, that's good. I appreciate the update, Carla. Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Jake, auditor. You guys are sleeping there now with no elections, so I know there's nothing going on in your world.
Yeah, no elections going on, that's good. Actually, Monday was the first day that we could start accepting absentee ballot request forms for this general election this fall. Before, we had to tell them not yet and send them communications. I've never seen so many emails or received so many phone calls on the first day that you could request an absentee ballot 120 days prior to an election than this year. So, it's just a sign of what's coming. There's a lot of discussion out there amongst the auditors because of the legislation and basically not allowing the Secretary of State's office to do a statewide mailer. Individual counties are making that decision if they're going to do mailings to all registered voters or not. Bigger counties are leaning, smaller counties are not, mostly due to cost. It's just really expensive to send stuff out, get it back, print it, those types of things. So, just a lot, there's a lot of discussion on that right now, and it's really fluid.
Jake, all the mailing costs are on us, too, correct?
If we do it, yes. Yeah, the one for the primary election was picked up by the state through COVID money, through federal money. They're still trying to figure out if that would be available to the local governments if we would do it at this point, but there's no clear definition that it would be. So, at this point, we would have to assume that it would be on our hook. And, you know, I saw a county yesterday that was estimating 25 cents to each voter one way, and that wouldn't include anything back. So, that was with a major bulk mailing and, you know, using a mail service type thing, something like that. So, lots of different variables. There's a lot of interest in absentee voting for this election, so I'm not, just not sure exactly how we're going to deal with it yet. So, it's really fluid at this point.
Okay, very good.
The other end is tied up with Michaela, is we've been bouncing back and forth on doing the June month end and going through our processes. She got far enough, and we got far enough things in order to roll in the new fiscal year on our system. So, we are now currently residing, our accounting system is in 2021 now. And then, she's finishing her year-end, as she indicated, and we are working on finishing our year-end on our side. She's got the revenue side, you know, we have the expense side. So, that's kind of where we are on the accounting side. I think we have onsite auditors in about two weeks here, so that's kind of where we are with what's happening here.
Okay. Very good, thanks, Jake. Bridget, anything going on from environmental health?
We're still moving forward with septic installs, having several per week. We're sitting at like 68 permits for this year, plus the ones that were left over from last year. Grants to counties with their well-filling programs. We've been getting some of those in lately, so that's a good thing. We're utilizing that grant. And then, on enforcement end of it, we've had a couple. We've had two things so far movement enforcement-wise. There was a rabies case, a bite case here, and dog was declared vicious by the Board of Health. So, been working with the county attorney and cam on this one. And same thing with a movement on a complaint case. A gentleman was fined, and now he is putting in a septic system. So, things are moving that way. Just shout out to Ross, he's been really great to work with and answers me quickly. So, yeah, things are still moving here in EH. So, it's just getting hot out and, yeah, sweating a lot.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Bridget, appreciate the update. Tiffany, mental health?
Oh, David, while we're thinking of you, still having meetings virtually, still meeting with clients. Been working with the jail a lot here in Marion County and Knox Hospital on some more difficult clients. So that's been keeping us very, very busy. Otherwise business as usual. So.
Good. Got folks in the room. Kim, anything in public health?
Well, we still have COVID.
We still have COVID.
It's not over.
Still the first wave, right? Let's get, let's make sure people understand. We, we haven't even left the first wave.
That's right. That's right. We are having more, more cases to follow and, and that those are, seem to be associated with. Informal gatherings and, and parties and, and things like that. So. We're, we're asking people to please remember the, the things that we have been talking about since the beginning about social distancing and, and such. We've been doing some planning for, for openings with some community members and, and that just like what we have been doing. Talked to the school yesterday. I still have nine people on furlough, brought one back. We have started doing testing at the health department on Tuesdays and Thursdays. For non-symptomatic people who, if they're symptomatic, we, we ask them to call their doctor and go to the doctor and, and get that test there. But, but if they are concerned that they've been exposed or, and they're concerned that they're asymptomatic, then they come to us. Because the, the clinics want to, want the people who are clearly symptomatic to come to them. So we are doing those on Tuesdays and Thursdays. General assistance was a little bit slow during the first part of COVID, but it seems to be picking up and getting busier again. Senior nutrition is kind of business as usual. It seems to be hurting right along.
Okay. Just a, a couple of things to make everybody aware, especially regarding COVID. We're going to fire up our Facebook Live series again. Emily is working on that, I think, getting that set up.
We're very good scheduled.
Okay. So working on that. We thought it'd be a good time to give an update, especially with all of the things going on in southern states. We've had some discussions here in Marion County about mask wearing and about orders and those things. I had some discussions with the city of Knoxville yesterday on that. So it's a good time, I think, to refresh everybody on those same behaviors we talked about before. Social distancing, hand washing, et cetera, and where we're at in Marion County, what we're seeing in terms of case development. So we'll be firing that up again as probably on Friday, along with some additional updates from some community leaders. As well. So just so everybody knows about that. Jeff, anything from EMA? Nothing? Lisa, HR? Okay. Chris, facilities?
Yeah, courthouse project's going great. Shaft is up and done. So if you get a chance to swing by the courthouse and check that out, I'd recommend it, especially for staff. It's a pretty neat look. Plaster work is starting this week. Most of the new electrical stuff is done and the guys have been doing a phenomenal job in a extremely hot, stuffy, nasty courthouse. Replacing heat pumps. So in the last month, they've worked their way down to second floor. From fourth, they're well over half done and they're knocking out between two and three heat pumps a day. So they're doing an outstanding job.
Very good. Appreciate the update. I did have a conversation with Mr. Bull yesterday about some environmental conditions at East Elementary, namely air conditioning. I'll be talking with Chris and Ed about that later on to see if there are any remedies. We are not going to put a ton of money into that building. So just so everybody knows, but we'll try to make it a place where everybody can work comfortably to the extent that we can. So we'll be having some additional conversations on that as well. All right?
Couple, couple different things. Is there anybody in the, the room at East that like, is Mike there or Andrew? I know Andrew's.
Good question. Yeah, Mike, Andrew, are, are they around guys in the big room at East?
Mike Coon.
Yeah.
Mike Coon is with us.
I'm here. This is Andrew.
Andrew, any updates from you?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. We're focusing on a lot of projects right now and just things as they come up with, with different. Stuff with, with East Elementary and dealing with stuff, with GIS stuff. We still do have. Hello? You guys doing all right?
Yep, yep.
We, we still do have our, our job posting out there. So we, we have had some applications come in, but we're still. Seeking at more applicants. For the, for the help desk and GIS position. And yeah, the appointment system is, I think, working very well. We, we continue to get updates from the software manufacturer weekly. A lot of them are per our requests. I sent requests into the developer and they've been making changes. We just got a big one today that I work on with the manager's office. So, but yeah, we've had over close to 25 permits already on that system. So it's working very well.
Great, thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Is Mike Coon?
He says Steve.
Yeah, Mike's on if you can hear me.
Yeah, again, Mike, any updates from VA?
Um, let's see. Having quite a few meetings on phone conversations and a couple Zoom meetings. Had two last Thursday, for example. Things are moving along, getting a little more attendance showing up here at the courthouse this past quarter than the quarter before. So we've got our helping veterans. Finished off the year-end report, the generic report that the state passed. It was due the 31st of this month and that went into the mail this week and you all got a copy of that. Basically that will generate the other $10,000 back about mid-July into our budget. Other than that, I'm kind of working on a quarterly report again. We've had our commission meeting and we're heading toward August. So I think things are going well considering. And then I'm also helping direct people over to the courthouse annex, I call it.
All right.
Which has been going well. I catch them before they get up to the second floor most of the time.
Wow, that's good. We appreciate that, Mike. Thank you. All right.
All good.
Any other updates for the good of the order? Steve Keesh, anything you want to update anybody on right now?
No.
Okay.
I have a question, Mark.
Yeah, Tyler.
As, as far as the sign-in sheets for our offices, are we still doing that for employees moving between county offices? I couldn't remember.
You know what? I don't see that as being as necessary now, Tyler, for staff moving between offices. So.
Are guests still signing in?
Guests, yes. I would still say guests, yes, but not, not employees. Continue to reinforce with your staff just the proper. The proper mitigation practices. It is social distancing, hand washing, social distancing, hand washing. That's it. So, okay.
Just one other update with the heat. For public perception, you may see my guys sitting alongside the road taking a break a little more often than normal right now.
Understand. Understand. Absolutely. Bridget, probably the same goes for you when you're outside and Steve, your guys as well. So. We don't want anybody having heat stroke while they're doing their job. They all carry plenty of water and things like that with them, right? Things like that?
Yes.
Bridget?
Jeff, if we have an ice machine, we'd still take one.
I'm still trying to get you one.
All right. Steve, you guys, you guys carry a lot with, with them, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey Tyler, I think I have an ice machine floating around somewhere. There's, uh, there should be an ice machine that I got from Hy-Vee that is either over at East Elementary or maintenance or somewhere.
I think that's long gone. I didn't think it worked. I didn't think it worked.
All right.
Okay, it came out of a Casey store probably two or three years ago that, when we were requesting one. So. I'm not sure where it's at now, I guess.
All right.
Okay. We had one from the county home, but it didn't last very long.
This was one that was out of a Casey that was maintenance had it for a while.
Okay.
Right before your time.
Very good. Thank you. There are no more updates. We'll move on to the second item. Motion to close discussion on this.
Motion, we close discussion?
Second.
Jake?
John?
Hi.
Combs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi. Very good. Second item is, and we're glad to have Cameron here and help me with, your name, ma'am?
Debbie Stevens.
Debbie? Debbie? Okay. Here. I don't know when this started, Kim. About a month ago?
I need help.
Over a month ago?
I'm trying to find the email.
About six weeks? I got with Cameron. We called him out here and put him through an interrogation process. But one of my lingering questions throughout my time on the board and various 9/11, EMA, et cetera, is. Where and what do we have for GIS? What do we have for that type of software? What do we, what do we spend on it? How do we get access to it? All those questions that I've been asking for all these years. Haven't received an answer, at least that satisfies me. So ask Cameron and to secure help. In figuring out what we had from a system standpoint for GIS. Eventually, all this was going to fold over to Andrew and Andrew will take over the GIS system. He's, he's told me very clearly that he is not the expert in GIS and that's okay. He can manage it and we'll find somebody. Who can take on the three functions that we need, which is website development, GIS, and additional help desk services. So that's where that's going from an IT standpoint. So this is not, this will all fold into IT with this report. So with that, Cameron and Debbie, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm, you guys have a presentation, so I, I wanted to make sure that we got to that. So please take her away.
All right. So Cam is kind of going to run the mouse and click where we need to and chime in when, when we need him. And it might be that we'll have to sign into one site so that you can see a couple of things a little better. And so the first thing that I want to do is say thank you for inviting me because I love GIS. I did not start in this. It's very unusual, but in fact, years ago in 2006, I got tagged from the state to take a four-Her. Who happened to be Adam Dorn. So that's how I got to know Adam and I knew his mom a little from working at the hospital. So we went out and went to San Diego, which was a terrible thing, you know? We spent a week out there, yeah. And we were overwhelmed. And so that's one thing. I don't want to overwhelm you, but I want to give you the chance to see the just immense capabilities of a GIS system. You guys have the foundation. So that's what we want to start with. So Cameron has done some background in that. And what we've created here is a story map. So what is geographic information systems? It's really an information management tool. And it's had visual and analytic capabilities and the analytic capabilities just have been more and more. Pronounced and rigorous as the time has passed. And by the way, you guys will all get the link to this story map. It's, it's public. So. Yep. So you have that. All right. So on this, I just put, what is GIS and its value proposition? Well, first of all, maps are power. When you look at a map, you are able to see so many different things. You can see relationships. You can see borders. You can see data that we can bring in. And an estimate, estimated 80% of data that we collect can be mapped because it has a spatial or visual component. Also, an estimated 65% of people are visual thinkers. They look at this and see this better. So you all know what a spreadsheet looks like. All the fields going across. And I mean, you could put fields in there going from here to your next facility somewhere. And then you have all the rows of information under each of those fields. If you wanted to look and see how many lead poisonings there were in Marion County in a given year for young children. You would have to go through all that spreadsheet. You could, you could query it out and filter out the data. But if you put that information into a map, you can see it visually where are they located? You can overlay other layers like, ooh, why are, are there so many in this area? Well, maybe it's because the housing is older and red paint was, was approved at that point in time. So you can see things so much more easily. You can, you can throw up maps on your road maintenance. If they're working on a bridge, you can put a map online. That shows people you're going to have to take a different route because this will be closed down for two or three weeks. So maps, maps tell a story and they really are the things that a lot of people can look at that and see. Now I'm going to be honest. I love GIS. I teach GIS. I've done a lot of research. I'm on a lot of committees and things. But I still get lost coming out of the Des Moines Airport at night trying to come home. So that doesn't mean I'm spatially good, but it does mean that I, I can read a map if I have the light on. So.
Raimi, what is your title and who do you, who do you work for?
Oh, I'm career services coordinator at William Penn University full-time, but I am an adjunct teacher in GIS. And leadership in the past and nursing, whatever they need an adjunct teacher for. And I created and developed the associate's degree program in geospatial technology in Indian Hills. And I found another teacher and we teach in that. So I have done this for years. Yep. Sorry. I didn't think about that. You guys don't know me so well. So. Maps also allow a system of engagement. And so one of the things I want you to be aware of as we go through this. You have all the hardware and software that you need to expand your GIS. You have a great foundation. Assessors started this whole thing years ago and got GIS involved. What had started way back when as ArcView is now ArcMap and all kinds of platforms. So you have desktop. You have online and you have mobile now. And so there are so many ways that you can use GIS in your daily work. And you have enterprise. You have a GIS server that will allow you to do almost anything free that we're going to talk about today. Because you have the maintenance licenses and you update annually and you spend a lot of money on that, more than a lot of counties your size. And you could be doing a lot more, but it has to be something that you are the architects of. You can't just say, let's do this. You're going to have to sit down because it's the users who will sustain it. So you want to empower them, train them, do that. So we're going to talk about some of those. This is just a simple story map that I created as a quiz. Story maps can tell a story. I was telling Cameron and I, I did not put a link into the story map galleries on the Esri site, but Cameron can get you that. There is a great website out in the Quad Cities. I don't remember which city did it, but every time they do more work on a new alley. They do a before and after picture. They put how much they spent, how much came from grants, how much came from their city. And, and it's awesome. They have been updating that every year as they have gone through this process. And I'm amazed at all of the work they did. I believe it was the city of Boston a few years ago won an award about a story map they did on snow removal in the winter. They had so much snow, they didn't know what to do with it. So they created a process so that they could actually use their city streets again. And that, that won a, a big award at the Esri mapping conference. And so there are so many ways that you can use this. And again, I want you to be aware that you have the, the resources. You have the assets. So you have the hardware, the software, the data. Everybody here is collecting data. All of your department heads collect data. You probably are using spreadsheets to do that. You probably have Excel spreadsheets or Access database. You probably have Excel spreadsheets or access databases, which both can be actually brought into GIS and mapped, as long as there is some kind of a geospatial, uh, location, like latitude, longitude, altitude, depending on what you're doing.
Like an example would be for our RH department using Schneider Beacon. We pull up and helped through Andrew and other Schneider people. We're able to, uh, pull out of our spreadsheets permits and out of their own PDFs into a file. And so when people can go onto Beacon themselves, they can view their own permits, view the map, view what they signed up for and actually did as well. So we have tools that are being utilized everywhere within our county and all the time. You just also might not be aware of it too, where it's actually being utilized. It's a little bit more subtle than it needs to be at points, so.
And, and the other good thing about this is you have data that should not be shared with the public. You have confidential data. You have data that can be shared with the public, and your enterprise system allows you to have a geo database and have compartmentalization, and you can put different people internal access or external to the public so that you could post maps that bring in this. You can even create maps that update in real time. There, there are so many ways to use GIS. So you can, you can keep privacy, uh, public health, sometimes environmental health, a lot of other things that go on. A lot of times you might be sending, I know Kim has mentioned that she sends, uh, data to the state. What happens to that? Do we ever see that back? Do you ever, can you ever post your data to say, this is how many people we saw this year? This is how many people we've helped with the COVID virus. And I will let you know that if you go on the Esri website, COVID is a huge thing. If you watch television, if you look at websites, anytime you see a COVID map, probably nine times out of ten or more, you will see Esri is the base for that, and that's, that's what you have. Also, they are a great support system. I asked for a couple more licenses for my education, and I got a million credits and a thousand licenses. I only needed like a hundred, so, um, we, we've kinda scaled that down now. But there are so many things that you can do, and you have all these capabilities. And the nice thing is, we used to go out with a GPS unit and collect data. Now you can go out with your cell phone or a NetPad or an Apple iPad, and you can collect it using mobile apps like Survey One, Two, Three. There's a new Quick, Quick Connect that you can collect things on. And you guys have access to all of that because you have an online organizational account. So that web mapping gives you a lot of flexibility and so many new things. In fact, Esri really has, uh, ramped up how vigorous you can use with online mapping and all the analysis tools that they give you.
Those apps are only collecting coordinates though, correct?
The apps collect coordinates, but, but they also allow you to create a form that says, here's where I'm at, uh, here's where I'm collecting this. It does a GPS unit.
Okay, so you can expand on that.
Yep, and, and then you can say, okay, this street sign is in need of repair, uh, there's street signs missing here. Uh, the fire hydrants here are, you know, how many? And, and how much pounds of pressure of water do they each do? So you probably know so much more about all of that. I have been learning it because we've done a lot of different, um, data collections for like the city of Oskaloosa and a couple other folks, just getting like all of the ash trees, all of the ash trees when they decided, what are we gonna do as they start dying out? And so our students and classes could go out and do that. We did a main, uh, aisle, or the main road, uh, coming into Oskaloosa. We have, you know, the north-south, sixty-three, east-west, uh, ninety-two. So we did every quadrant, uh, with a couple different classes so that they could say, okay, these are the houses that really look bad, these are the buildings that look bad. We need to do something about this. So then the city used that data to actually contact all of the landlords or the property owners and say, what can we do to help you? Here are some of the programs we have. So that when people drive into and out of our town, they're seeing a little bit better place. So I mean, very easy to do, and I, I'm just gonna tell you, four-Hers, uh, from fourteen and up are the ones going to San Diego, they are doing some awesome things. And they are doing opioid, opioid, uh, data collection from their states as part of a public health, uh, mapping project. And so different states like, uh, North Carolina, New York, um, we have some folks out in Nevada. And they are all doing this, and kids are doing this, and teaching public health people how to use these maps and how to collect. So this is another thing that, that we really focus on is, we can do this, but so can you guys. And it just takes maybe fifteen minutes of how to do that online downloadable survey to your cell phone.
And one thing also about these applications as well is, I mean, it's good, you can get all your data collected, but it also, it helps like the streamline of like, we're working with people around, like the more people say are connected to certain apps, you might be able to send somebody data right away instead of saying, having to go back to the office yourself and get it all done anyway. You could send that person who had that data collected already, set it up, or just get you a reporter an answer of what you ever need and get it back to you instead of having to waste time or spend time trying to go get an answer when it can just be done as quick, quickly as possible and just continue doing what you're doing or fix the problem right before you're going on. So it's more, a lot of these applications don't have just a single use, but a multiple use to them, and that's what's good about a lot, what you should be utilizing for is more than just one thing, to the full potential, whatever it could be, even if it's a little bit at a time, so.
And the way these work is you create your online map before you even go out. When you use Survey One, Two, Three, you create that form, that data collection form. It sends the data immediately right back to your map. So if you're sitting in the office, you can see what your folks are doing if they're collecting data on all the fire hydrants. You can see them pop up right on the map. And then there is a spreadsheet related to that map. It's called an attribute table, but it's a spreadsheet. And that's how GIS works. That's how it, it maps all the points that you're collecting. It uses that spreadsheet. So it, it's, it's so quick. You can, you can have that data as you go. It, it's not something that you have to wait a few days and bring into the map because it automatically comes in, so.
You can collect the data, but you need somebody to coordinate it on the other end.
Um, well, you can, for instance, Cameron could start a map of all of the septic tanks. And, and what he can do is he can go out and he can collect that if he wants to. He might have it in a spreadsheet already, but as he's collecting, it all goes into the map automatically. There's, there's really nobody that has to manage that. He can get back to the office, but if you have a system where you have like Bridget, I believe is his boss. So if Bridget is at the office and there's something that you wanna report on immediately, she can call Cameron and say, could you go out in this area because somebody wants a report, you know, right now? And so he could do that, and she could download the report from that data right away from the office, and he can still be out collecting. So it's, it's so much, uh, more user-friendly than it used to be, and it's so much quicker. So quick capture is what they call it, so there's a new quick capture name, but. And what he's showing you right here, and again, we're not gonna go through this and go so deeply, but this is a map I just created in about ten minutes. And I just put a marker where you have different city or different county functions. And so all of those county functions, I just kinda listed what, what you had under the, um, under the website list. And of course, I know your courthouse, you kinda spread people out because you're working on the courthouse, so right now this wouldn't be as accurate. But this is something you can create, and you can post, uh, and embed in your website if you wanted people to know, hey, if you used to go to the courthouse, here's where these are now. And so it's, it can be more visual.
And we're gonna give a little, we're gonna give an example later on there. I don't know if you've seen it, Kim, yet, the Lynn County one, but Lynn County, Cedar Rapids, how they set up their whole website, public health, everything, all using GIS, using Esri, using it extremely public-friendly, going on there. If you, anything you guys wanted, it's a great example. And like she's mentioned to me, they are willing to come and work and help with us, give out examples. They were willing to have us come visit as well and go up there and see how they run everything, how they get stuff. Yes, it's a bigger county, but we can still gain ideas from, uh, learning from them as well, so it wouldn't be a bad idea.
And what I was impressed about is a law enforcement, uh, officer, Sunny, is the one that's the GIS expert. She was able to help public health put together all of their things using ArcHub, which is another capability that you guys would have. Once you have that enterprise, uh, server, that's, that's what really bumps up what you can do.
And it, so, so I wanna stop you guys, this is all great. So we have an enterprise server.
And Andrew's, and Andrew's working on it, and that's what he's been doing, he's been working on. And he's gonna, he'd be the guy, I'm like, I know we're explaining just, he's gonna be the guy that, like, he wants that in-depth explanation of how our software is gonna run. He will be your best guy for it, and I'm like on that, but like, he, we, he's working on it, enterprise, we're getting it established. But mostly, it's how I've noticed it, getting the tanks worked out, getting stuff out, like fixing our Schneider problem, like why your septic permits weren't popping up, and just getting it all wrangled together right now. But we had, working getting enterprise kicked in and a few other, yeah, things that we can't use as well, and whatever Andrew will find when working with Schneider that could benefit us farther down the road as well too, so.
Okay, thanks.
And the good thing about your county imagery, you use pictometry with Beacon, and that is all, uh, GIS, you know, mergeable. Everything, everything can interact together, and you don't have to pay extra. So Schneider's been good, um, as the four-H national tech team leader, I was able to get pictometry for a year free, and it's awesome imagery. You guys probably don't look at it often enough because it's, it's very, very high resolution, down to four inches now, I think, uh, from the ground. So you could practically see license plates on cars sitting in your parking lots. I mean, it's, it's that good, so. You can't quite read the, uh, the imprints on the fire hydrant, so we still had to go out and look at the fire hydrants because we knew they were plow because Oskaloosa has all, you know, plow, but we couldn't tell exactly the year on it because it was just a little bit less. So these, this is the Lynn County. So this is something that I would just like you to take a look at just because this is something that's made possible, and they did it pretty much on-site. They did their own things. And so they have a lot of the COVID, which is on a lot of county websites. And then they have all of the things here.
You know, there is a lot to go through, and so that's why I sent you guys the link because there's also a white paper later on.
Yep, you, there are so many things that you can delve into.
And.
And here's one of their mapping sites, and let's see, go down to the one that we looked at the other day.
And then we have printable maps, downloadable maps, resource, and like, and they're also, this is also a, they have their own data hub in here as well. So say if the public wants to get their own specific stuff, to make their own map or anything else, they can actually go on here as well, and where it's provided, where I haven't seen anything within our county that we can develop, download our own data for stuff like that. But again, our website's a little bit outdated, as you guys can tell. But this is like extremely user-friendly, and I would, again, give it a, just give the shot looking through it, exploring through it all, and just getting some ideas from it all, because.
Just click on the printable maps up there, on that link, and just show them one of the printable maps, so. There are a lot of district maps, there are election maps. If you go onto Lynn County, they have, right there, an election map at the beginning, I guess.
This is Lynn County's website?
Yeah, this is their website, and it's, it's not just public health or not just, you know, uh, roads. It's the whole county, county one, so, yep.
And a lot of them are, is like, just like our organizational account for Marion County on Esri, theirs is also connected through there as well. So sometimes you do need like a certain account for certain access, but again, that's more private, more public. I mean, you don't want the public in on the county work doing either, so.
And, and that's, that enterprise system and the organizational account, you can give access to people with usernames and passwords, and you're in control of who has what. So you're in control of who can put public, uh, data out on the web. You're in control of what stays private. And, and I would always suggest sitting down and putting together a blueprint because again, you're the architects of this GIS system. And as you put together these things, you need to keep track because the biggest thing I've found, not only just with students, but with people that use this for a living, you forget what your username and password is, and then, oh my gosh, you know, it's sometimes almost impossible, and you don't wanna lose data you've already stored. So that's something you need to keep track of.
Debbie, is it, it's Debbie, right?
It is Debbie.
Okay, Debbie. Would it be fair to say, so one of the things we have said as a board is we need a total, uh, upgrade of our website?
Yes.
So does this work hand in glove with that? So we want to.
Absolutely.
Have a better utilization of GIS across all county functions.
Right.
We have underutilized data, we know it. I know it, it's just that we need to get access to it. Board members need to have a better picture of the full scope of data that we have access to, and it needs to be digestible. It can't be where we're running out all the time and asking everybody a bunch of questions and getting a bunch of spreadsheets.
Right.
Is that, when, when we talk about the architecture of this high level, it's to bring all this under one umbrella.
Right, and probably Andrew would understand this, Cameron does, there's a workflow with GIS. And when you use GIS, there are things that you might do all the time, or the assessor might do every day, or, or Kim or Cameron might do every day using their GIS. And you can set that up in a workflow that brings the data where you want it and updates the maps or updates the, uh, geo database that you're using. And, and as you do that, it's, it's more automatic the more you work with it. So, and that's something, again, you can put all of that in enterprise, and you can give each person the access they need in enterprise or in the organizational account. And that way you get to all of the things that you, that you need, whether it's internal or external. And so you could go on, and maybe, maybe the supervisors would have a different account so that they could see more than just the public and, and see what's going on internally as well to see, do we have the data to answer this question? Because GIS is a huge tool for decision-making.
Yes.
And you're a business, you're a county government, but you are a business. And if you do not use your assets and resources and leverage them to the best capability, you're wasting all the money you're spending on all of the software and things you're using. So I just want you to.
I like you.
I totally agree.
I love GIS. I see so many potentials. And I'm gonna be honest, I do not get a lot of questions from governments that say, how can we do this better? That's why I was so excited when Cameron suggested, and Kim came to me and said, could you tell us more, so.
Yeah, that's great.
Now, we have, go back up to that list, um, the local government solutions. Click on that one. I went through, just so I knew exactly how many local government solutions are listed. And Cameron, okay, so you can see the little dots there. There are four screens that have all of these things.
And it keeps going down, too. It's not just sixteen they'll give you, so.
So, so let's go to, let's go to, go back to development and planning. I think it's on the second or third one. There it is, right, right there on that, that one, the first one. If you click on planning and development there, you can get more applications. So what you're doing, these are all applications that when you click on learn more, it says, what do you need for this, and enterprise or an organizational account? Pretty much, you have everything for these free. You don't have to buy things for this. So the, all of these applications can help you. Some of them are, are basic in some of the other things, like the assessor's office. But there are so many applications that are already right there waiting for somebody to put them together with what you already have and use your data to make your, uh, job easier, more efficient, more effective. There are a hundred and twenty-four local government solutions right now, just in, in these, this set, that if you start drilling down, you'll see there are fourteen here, there are nineteen there, there are seven here, and there are six there. And so all of these applications, when you look at them, you can see what it does. It has a short, a very short summary, but when you click on learn more, it will tell you more about what they do. So for instance, you could do elections, and you could have an online map that you put up, and you don't have to write everything up on a big board. You can put it right into the, the map and have that on a screen. the, the map and have that on a screen, and as the precincts come in, you can tell how many are for each candidate.
Good real-time data.
Yep, so.
Throw your board away.
Yeah.
No, now, wait a minute.
A big example would be your COVID, that would be perfect for a lot of places, especially like you were just said, first wave already, and like, and if you're going down, and then it's, as it's going up, it's a big concern, and also we can create maps and say, hey, this is unlike, and they don't have to be public or private, depending on whatever we determine, but who, where is the hotspot for like COVID, where is COVID more likely in this county, who is, where areas of locations are we having more problems? So we could even, we already manage retirement homes, senior centers like that, it's good we could track that with a map and determine at each map location, like the one we showed you, for each site, say where government stuff is done, we could say, hey, this is how many outbreaks we have, how many person, people we infected per area right there as well, so anything you can think about can be managed, it makes everything a lot easier for work. A good example, as you down here was notifying people of property. I don't know how we do it when we say we have to fix a water main or anything out here, we just send a letter out, or if we do it like this, but this, what we'll do is, that circle is a buffer zone, and it'll select all the areas within that buffer zone and send, it'll automatically print some type out, and you just have to print, and it'll just print them all out for people automatically, and then you're able to just go and send that letter out, saving time without having to go up onto a spreadsheet, go on the auditor's thing, and go on.
There's no doubt, I know that, I know what it can do.
Yeah.
I'm thoroughly from, so I'm walking.
Yeah, and, and so for that.
Our point, my, my, where I'm at is, who's going to do it for us? That's, I mean.
Well, this is the beauty of it. No one person can do everything GIS can do. However, you have people already using it, some of them probably would like to know, how can my job be made easier? How can I be more efficient? We empower them to do their job and to add things, maybe one of these apps, to, to their department. So, and how do we do that? With training? Let's go back out and let's show them some training. Esri has training, let's go clear down to, keep going, keep going, keep going, we can come back if we want to do that. Okay, learning plans.
Well, can I, can I, can I stop you? I want to stop you guys just for a second here, because I've got a, I've got a hard stop in about four minutes.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
It's just, it's a lot.
Yeah, you may. But it's, it's a lot, but I, I love where this is at, and one of the things I would like to suggest, because you correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is, we almost need, I'll call it an architecture meeting.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Where we bring out the people who are using it, we bring out people, we bring out Andrew, and we have an architect, what do we want this to do? And then furthermore, to answer Steve's question, how and who is going to do it?
And I know Andrew has a few of this down already, he's already gotten thoughts of what stuff we should do ahead of time, and like, I mean, I would think he'd be proactive on it right now, but he has.
Hey, Mark, this is Andrew, I don't mean to interrupt, but we've already had a, a GIS user meeting that has started that process.
Not the same.
And we're, we're planning on continuing that as time goes on. In fact, next time Snyder is down, next month, they would like to meet with us as well, as another user group meeting, and we're going to be doing that next month, or later this month, actually. So we are already doing that from a user, users' perspective, getting an idea of what the users currently are doing. There are definitely some discrepancies in what Debbie said today, there definitely are some things that we are already doing. Maybe they're not very clear on how we're doing it, and certainly a, a more user-friendly website and, and user-friendly system would definitely help with that. But there are definitely some things that we are already doing, there are some, some things that are extremely difficult to, to manage, especially our systems, our GIS systems integrate into our AS400 databases, and pull all of our data automatically from that. And, and also, a lot of these things, while, while they may be free for educational accounts, they do cost credits. So there are, and, and speaking with Snyder, we do have quite a few credits available to us to do some of these things, but they do cost some credits online, so we're definitely looking into all that stuff, and we'll kind of keep the GIS meetings available to the users, and certainly if, if any of the supervisors would like to come to that, I'll make sure you guys are invited to as well.
Well, I appreciate that, Andrew, but I'm, I'm thinking a little more high level than that, than just a users' meeting.
It needs to have your leadership.
Yeah.
It needs to have your department heads, it needs to have the people that use it, and then you need to bring in people to answer questions when you need them.
Right.
I, I don't need to be sold on the capability of it, because I'm, I'm already sold on that, I just want to see it happen.
Well, and I, but I, I think like in any business, Debbie, you're exactly right, anytime we, anytime a system is developed, all the business unit leaders get together, and they talk about the system, and they talk about what they want to see in the system. So first you have to know what you have, you have to know what your total capabilities are, and then you have to go through and talk about how this all integrates together to the extent possible to have one system. And have one system, maybe with some different offshoots, some different branches, some different user capabilities, but it's one system. So I think that's probably the next step, Debbie, does that sound fair?
Right, and I have dozens of things, I put a white paper link in here. The last thing I'm going to say, definitely as the leadership and empowering your users and things as you go on, Andrew's perfectly right about the fact that GIS and IT have to go together, because GIS is powerful. I think GIS is more of an information management tool than anything else, and so it, it fits there, and they have me teaching it in computer science, it's one of the things. But I want you to take a look at this at the end, and Cameron is going to have the actual account number that you can use to actually sit in and maybe watch the plenary sessions, or if you have more time, go to the Esri's virtual conference next week, 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th. There's an agenda on there, do you want to scroll back down and find the very end of that right there? So you can go in, you can register, you can register for just the plenary section, but because you guys have an actual account, you can use that account number to sign up and see anything that you want, plenaries, workshops, and then on Thursday, it's all special interest groups, so they have county people, they have environmental science people, they have public health people, they have maintenance people, they have fire people, so they have all these things, and that would give you some more background, but if, if you're already sold on it, yes, it's, it's the people that use it who will sustain it in the end, because not, no one person can sustain it, but everybody working together, so.
Okay.
Again, you guys are the architects, you have to build a system, and you have to create that blueprint to go with it.
So thank you, thank you. This is a good high-level start for us, we really appreciate it. We'll be in touch on next steps, because I think what we have is, we need to have that art, well-called, architecture meeting, I won't call it a whiteboard session. All right?
Cameron knows how to get me if you need me.
Yeah, and if you guys, and if you guys are interested still, I can, with her, I can reach out to the people at Lynn County, if you guys, anybody is still interested in learning, and hearing from them, and just see how they go with their role, and just so we can reach out, I'm not sure if you guys are, but if you guys want to, just so I can let you guys know, or Kim, you can let me know, and I can send a link up to you guys, or just in contacts or forums, so.
Thank you, Cameron, thank you, Debbie, I appreciate it.
This is great.
And there are lots of Esri people very pleased that our county government wants to expand and use GIS more.
That's awesome.
Great, thank you.
They'll help you too.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will follow up definitely. With that, entertain a motion to close discussion.
Make motion to close discussion.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, thank you all.
Thanks for having me.
Catch you.